Good evening. I'd like to call to order the Albany City Council meeting for September 5, 2017. Please join Vice Mayor Pilch in the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, on occasion, under God, indivisible, the liberty and justice for all.
Do we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Barnes?
Here.
Councilmember Moss?
Here.
Councilmember Nation?
Here.
Vice Mayor Pilch?
Present.
Mayor McQuaid?
Here. As a historical note, we had no closed session this evening. Consent calendar. Any councilmember wish to pull an item?
Five dash four.
Five four. Any others? Any member of the public wish to pull anything? Okay. Rochelle?
Okay. I just wanted to reaffirm that the issues, I submitted a letter talking about three issues. Bicycle, infrastructure was one, parking lot configuration was another, and art, the idea of rotating art, I think these were all things that we discussed during the study session. And I submitted a letter because I didn't see changes coming forward. So I wanted to say on the record that, affirm on the record that those ideas will be taken into account in the implementation plan, although missing from the strategic plan. The other thing I wanted to do was ask a question. It's kind of a procedural question, and it has to do with action four in the draft strategic plan about the San Pablo Avenue corridor. It seems the draft Economic Development Strategic Plan seems to be a somewhat different vision than the one that we, the San Pablo Avenue corridor section of the general plan that we adopted very recently. So, and I worry a little bit that if there's uncertainty about development, about what might or might not be allowed in the future, you can actually inadvertently create a kind of development blight. If someone thinks, "Well, if I sit on this parcel, maybe eventually I'll be allowed to do something a lot more intensive than I am now, so I won't do anything for the time being." So I'd like to be sure, I'd just like to know sort of the procedure for clarifying which of these, we have an adopted vision for San Pablo Avenue, and it seems that the draft strategic plan is suggesting that we go back and look at changing that. What is the, what would be the procedure? Is that going to be part of the implementation plan, or is that something for down the road? How would that work?
If the two become in clear conflict, for instance, the strategic plan seems to, the way it's being interpreted in years to come, or through the implementation, seems to differ from the general plan. The general plan is really more of our bible than the Economic Development Strategic Plan. So I think the case could be argued if someone were to interpret the strategic plan as a different vision from our general plan. The general plan is our planning document and our zoning document. I don't know if staff wants to add anything to that.
Okay. Well, that's, you know, the problem is that the development plan does seem to contemplate revisiting aspects of the general plan, and I hope that we won't create too much of an expectation that the plan that we just adopted is now going to be changed. That's all.
I agree with that expectation. We do not have an expectation that it would be, that that document, the new general plan would be changed.
Okay. Thank you.
It seems like, if I could make a comment here, that some of the correspondence we received actually refers to the general guidelines of the San Pablo Avenue Plan, which is almost 15 years old. So I think the general plan surpasses that anyway.
Yeah, but the general plan, you know, it's got language like, it talks about buildings being designed to protect the privacy and sunlight on adjacent lower-scale properties along Adams Street and Canes. And then when you look at the draft strategic plan, it's talking about considering a new plan with an EIR that might involve changes that would include extending the commercial district out to Canes or Adams in certain places. So they are, I think that the, there is a substantive difference between what is being suggested as something to consider in the future in the strategic plan that is substantively different from what we just adopted as the, in the San Pablo Avenue corridor section of the general plan.
I hear you. I'm sorry.
My comment would be that it is, those two are not necessarily in conflict. One could extend the commercial corridor while still making sure that the impacts on the neighboring streets are as minimal as possible. So I don't see those as in conflict, and I think that it is more of a strategic plan than an implementation plan, as you point out, and in the implementation, those details can be fleshed out. And I do hope that we actually move forward with changes, potential changes to the general plan if they are required for implementing something bold for our city. So that would be, those would be my thoughts on that matter. But just since I have the floor, thank you for pulling this item, and I concur with your thoughts that the changes to the plan did not capture our discussion in the two meetings ago, or whenever it was, and in particular, the bicycle parking. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
Are there any other comments on this? Okay, that's the only item that was pulled, so could we have a roll call, please, on consent?
I think we have to move it. I'll move the consent calendar.
That's all part of the roll call. I'm new at this.
Councilmember Barnes?
Yes.
Councilmember Moss?
Yes.
Councilmember Nation?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Pilch?
Yes.
Mayor McQuaid?
Yes. The motion carries. Okay, good of the city. Time for persons desiring to address the city council on an item that is not on the agenda. Please note, city policy limits each speaker to three minutes. The Brown Act limits the council's ability to take and/or discuss items that are not on the agenda. Therefore, such items are normally referred to staff for comment for a future item, for future agenda. And is there anyone wishing to address the council? Seeing no one. Councilmember reports on meetings attended, announcement of future meetings, city manager report and comment. I'll start. I participated in National Night Out. Was able to attend the coffee with the cops. Rochelle and I attended the, our Altibates Subcommittee, which we are now on the Community Organizing Subcommittee, and we're working on a public forum regarding the potential closure of Altibates Hospital, which will be held after the New Year. Nick and I attended a community meeting hosted by a city council member, Berkeley City Council Member Sophie Hahn, on the potential of converting the Oaks Theater into a climbing gym. And I attended the Everyone Home Leadership Board, where we sent a resolution to the Board of, Alameda County Board of Supervisors, supporting the creation and operation of the coordination entry system, which matches eligible persons experiencing a housing crisis to a range of housing and service options. And we also approved the prioritization tool and the coordinated entry manual for that system. Other councilmembers?
Go ahead. August is, like, for the city, also for the county meetings that I generally attend aren't happening, except for one, Recycling Board, which met in mid-August. The meeting was mostly a discussion about what's going on in the recycled plastic world. The big news there was that China is on the verge of no longer accepting recycled plastic paper and other things that they've been taking. So if that happens, the whole recycling market could start to fall apart.
I can't recall if the last East Bay Clean Energy Board meeting was before or after our last council meeting, but I did attend that. We're meeting again in mid-September. But one item of note is that there was a, the board was warned about the potential of a rider to a bill in the state legislature that would put a moratorium on new CCAs, or CCEs, whichever acronym you prefer. But I have not, it was just a rumor that that might happen, and I have not heard that that has materialized at all. Should that happen, I'll alert the council members that we might want to do something.
Is that expected to affect East Bay Clean Energy, or are we too far down the road?
There was some uncertainty about that, therefore, we, there was a bit of alarm on behalf of the newly hired CEO, man by the name of Nick Chassett. So he sent out the alarm.
In addition to the National Night Out and Altibates Subcommittee meetings that Mayor McQuaid mentioned, Mr. Moss and I met as a Subcommittee, as we'd been asked to do by the council, to talk about how we will, a policy for council statements on various kinds of issues, from legislation to kind of goings-on in the world. And we've, we have forwarded a draft to the city manager, and hopefully we'll have, see that on an agenda soon.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. All right. We now move down to new business. Resolution 2017-73, approving guidelines for restricting street parking near intersections. May we have a staff report, please?
Good evening, Madam Mayor and councilmembers. The action before the city council this evening is to review and approve guidelines for the establishment of red no-parking zones at intersection. The intent of this policy is to improve pedestrian safety for the community. During the past several years, the city's received citizen requests for, to implement these red zones at several intersections. For example, we have implemented them on an ad hoc basis along Washington, east of San Pablo Avenue. Other requests that we've received have encountered some neighborhood resistance, primarily due to the impact of the red zones on the availability of street parking. The guidelines that are before you this evening have been reviewed by the Traffic and Safety Commission at two meetings. In May, they provided us detailed comments, which we were able to incorporate into a final draft, which they then reviewed at their June meeting and have voted to recommend to you to approve. The basic principle here is that to try to have on-street parking positioned far enough away from intersections to allow motorists to see pedestrians preparing to cross the street. And this is a representative intersection in Albany with, from Google Earth, that shows an example of a situation that we're trying to deal with. This is a vehicle that's parked right now legally, but if you're a pedestrian, and this is, happened to be on Garfield, and you're walking east in front of this car, a vehicle coming down from the north would have a hard time seeing you. And so the idea is to create a red zone so that the motorists and the pedestrian have a little bit more time to see each other. The basic guidelines are pretty simple. On the approach side of an intersection, the guidelines call for 15 to 20 feet of a red zone, and on the departure side, after the turn, it's 3 to 10 feet. And the request for a little bit of flexibility is to be able to evaluate situations on a case-by-case basis, to see what's the remainder area that's not red zone, to make sure, if possible, that we can make, if it's possible to squeeze in a legitimate parking space next to the red zone, or in some cases, extend the red zone if we can't create one. So in this aerial photograph, to use an example, the mouse may not be picking up very clearly on the screen, but that intersection, the southwest intersection where it says 15 to 20 feet, that's roughly 35 feet from the crosswalk to this driveway. So if we had a 15-foot red zone, that would leave 20 feet, which is enough for parking a car. It's kind of tight, but it will work. And most city, city streets, vehicles owned by city residents would fit in a 20-foot Other cases, if there was a little bit more room, we'd want to extend it to full 20 feet. Another example here on the far side is this is about 40 feet from this crosswalk up to this driveway, and so, again, we'd want to space this so that we can get as much street parking as we can without losing any of the safety benefits of the red zone.
Is there a homely accepted standard for how big a parking space has to be?
If it's marked with like the T marks painted on the ground, that's usually 23 feet, 22 to, 22 feet. And that's kind of a worst-case scenario, so it's a larger vehicle, a big SUV or something. As a rule of thumb, most cars are 20 feet or so, no? 15? I rely on Aleida, obviously, for a lot of the technical information here. So you can, smaller and medium-sized cars can easily fit in less than that. So in most places in the city, we don't mark parking spaces, and so we would, we'd be comfortable with 15 or 20 feet as a legitimate parking space.
The idea is you have...
The manager of this district is working creating 1.5 parking space.
Right. That makes it worse, because then someone will try to squeeze in either to partially block somebody's driveway, or partially park into the red zone. So we want to make it clear that it's really one parking space, or none at all. As part of the policy, we ask that for unique intersections, that the city engineer be given the ability to do an analysis. Some streets where there are issues, for example, posing comes in at an angle in certain areas, and that would be an area where we would want to look at that on a case-by-case basis, or if there's unique landscaping, or some other physical element that affects the visibility, we do think there's a lot of value to looking at these on a case-by-case As with any citywide initiative, where it's challenging for us to implement them all at once, so as a policy, we'd like to proceed by prioritizing first for our higher priority pedestrian networks. Our active transportation plan identifies those roadways. We also like to, again, this is something reviewed by the Traffic and Safety Commission, consider whether a pedestrian route is a safe route to school, or close to a school, close to a transit stop that would be likely to have more pedestrian activity, as well as getting to our commercial districts or our community facilities. And then finally, we do get, receive reports, many of these are initiated by citizens who are concerned about a particular situation. I think you'll hear from a citizen this evening regarding a particular one. And then finally, because we're touching parking, public parking, public engagement is very important, and thus, we would propose a notification process where we send postcards to residences within 150 feet walking distance of the proposed parking restricted area. And again, this is something the Traffic and Safety Commission discussed and felt like that that was most likely to get the people who are parking in that particular space. And they would get the postcard, we would mail the postcard 10 days before the Traffic and Safety Commission meeting. And then finally, with respect to implementation, we ultimately want to roll this into a, as a small capital improvement project in future capital improvement budgets. This is something the Public Works Department will probably want to use a striping contractor to implement a bunch of these at a time over a number of years. So with that, Aleida, Adriano Chavez, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Are there questions?
A quick one. I mean, it's, I know, I just want a ballpark figure here, but given the number of intersections in Albany, if we went through and did them all and got them up to snuff by the plan you just suggested, I mean, how many of them do we have to fix? Are there any that are okay now, or do we have to do everything?
Well, we did some on Washington. Yeah, go ahead. We did probably eight intersections on Washington. I'm kind of guessing.
And that was due to community input?
Washington and Northern Front Street. I think it was Washington and...
Portland?
Portland. I always forget that one. Portland. We're going to Garfield, but I think that after that, we decided that it would be better to have a policy.
So basically, there's a lot of red paint we'll be putting down over the years.
Over the years, yes.
The issue is your, the width of your, the streets are, is very, is narrow, it's hard to see people, and kids usually run through the intersections when they go, and sometimes they go late to school. And cars, specifically this example that Jeff brought up, sometimes you don't stop at the intersection, you just go 25, luckily 25 miles per hour, and if a kid happens to run between the cars, you don't see that, and you don't stop in time. It's very important to have the visibility.
Other questions?
Yeah, well, a couple. Out of curiosity, how, what was the reaction to doing those corners on Washington? Did we get complaints from?
Yeah, people, in general, people were very concerned about the laws of parking, but when we explained that it was because of safety reasons, they kind of understood. We also tried to, I think the first plans went a little bit too aggressive, in a way, on the departure side, that we also did, when the parking, the parking is marked, the MUTCD, which is the Manual of Uniform Transportation Control Devices, recommends 20 feet throughout. So what we did is to basically differentiate between the approach, which is the critical side, and the departure. Basically, the departure side of the intersection doesn't really need the 20 feet unless it is a large vehicle like a RV or a big truck. But most likely, since we already have a control for that, you know, in the previous council action about five years ago, we don't allow parking of large vehicles within 100 feet of the intersection. So that was covered with the departure side. So I think in this case, when people understood that it was for safety reasons, they kind of accepted it.
If I may just add, the particular impact is for homes that are on a corner that could lose two parking space, two street parking spaces in front of the home.
Yeah.
And that's a sense, it's not their parking spaces, but people perceive them as vehicles.
I understand, but also, a home on a corner has two sections of the street that they can park on, so, you know, they have more parking spaces to begin with.
Agreed.
Have, has anyone monitored how well this has worked? Are people not parking in the red zone, or are they keeping out of it?
We don't have a systematic monitoring of it, but I've been observing that people are respecting it. Some people actually park on the, I've seen people parking on the departure side, red zone. Again, we don't have enforcement, you know, on these new areas, but if a police happened, a police officer happens to see that, then there will be...
Yeah, I can work with PD on collecting that information. So, I mean, these red curbs, are they all in? I can, I know some of them have been on Washington and Portland, but are, have they all been installed? The ones that you agreed to install with Traffic and Safety?
Yeah, yeah, there is, the one, and then with projects, like for instance, the Brighton Avenue Traffic Coming.
No, 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 I'm just saying, have they been painted? The ones that were...
Yes.
Okay, so what I can do is work with PD on collecting information about the tickets or the warnings or whatnot they're doing on those two particular roads, since there are more recently painted curbs.
Yeah, we can do that.
Help get the information to answer your question.
Might this conceivably lead to hiring another traffic parking ticket person in a little vehicle to go around and give tickets?
I think that would just take more analysis, but I couldn't certainly, I couldn't say no at this point, adding another, right. We're just, it's a tough position to recruit for and keep, so, but I certainly want to collect the data to give that back to you, so that we can understand if the red curbs are in fact having the impact that we want them to have.
What's the ticket on? The ticket value, do we have any idea?
I think all of our parking tickets are either 35 or 45. It's been actually a long time since I've gotten one, so...
It's been up, I think, recently.
Other questions? I have a couple. One is that I believe, trying to make this into a question, Marin was done years ago, all of the...
What?
Marin Avenue was done a few years ago.
Oh, Marin, yeah.
And it really hasn't been a big problem. I mean, our neighbor lost one parking place and learned to adjust. So I think, I mean, it certainly is doable. And I guess everything else I have is a comment, so I'll wait. So are there comments from the public? Come on up. At some point, will you fill out a green speaker card? You can do it afterward, and then just give it to Ann.
That was just for when you talked to the get it.
Nope, but that's fine.
Thank you. My name's Belle Adler, and I live, oh, sorry. My name is Belle Adler, and I live on Pomona. I actually live right near Dartmouth, but I drive down to Marin often and make left and a right. Can I, where is the overhead? Can I? There's not one. Oh, okay, then, you can pass this around. And just go ahead. I live on Pomona, and if you're coming down Pomona towards Marin and trying to make a left, or conversely, coming up Marin from San Pablo area, going up the hill, oh, thanks. Can you, yeah, turn it, this is Pomona, whoops, what happened there? Pomona facing Marin, and you can see that there's a fellow who lives at the corner, and if you're trying to make a left turn onto Marin, it's really hard to see around. So I'm not even talking about pedestrians, it's about smacking into a car. And if you just go to, go ahead a little bit, keep going, those are some of the same shots. It's worse this way. This is from Marin onto Pomona, and it's a real hazard, because I myself have almost had accidents there several times, and children go down on their bikes on Pomona, right in the middle of the street, without, of course, without helmets, listening to their, with their earbuds in, and they don't see, and cars swing around. And to make it even more complicated, in order to avoid, there's nothing much there. I can take that back. I used to go around the other way to get anywhere on Dartmouth. In other words, I would go down Pomona the other way, away from Marin, to make a right on Dartmouth to get somewhere. But then, when you get to San Pablo, you can't make a left there because of the new facility there. That's all been blocked off. And you can't make a left turn from San Pablo onto Dartmouth to swing around, come around the other way. So I guess my point is, I've talked to the Traffic and Safety Department, and they understand that this is an issue. The fellow who parks there leaves his car there for months at a time, and he won't move it. I've tried to encourage him to move it just for safety, but he won't. And so I see a red zone as the only option for safety there. So I just came up here to say I'm one of the people who've complained, and hope that you would take that into consideration, because it's really, it's really quite, it's really quite dangerous. I mean, most of my neighbors are very frustrated every day when we go down the street. So, anybody want to ask me anything about it, or?
Have you tried, you know?
Well, here's what happened.
Is this 72-hour rule, right?
Yes, I know that. What happened was, well, he can move it across the street. He actually had three cars there at one point. The one you see there, a smaller vehicle, and then a very, sorry, a very large truck. And I did call the police at one point, and he moved the very, it's sort of a RV to the other side of the street, away from the curb. So that took care of that part. But I would have to call every 72 hours to get him to move it, and it would, could still be there for 72 hours. So that's not really a solution. At one point, I had written what I considered a polite note, I stuck it on his car, and I said, "Would you mind, please, moving it up just a little bit? There were plenty of spaces on the street, and it's dangerous, it's also dangerous for your own car, because somebody could crash into that." your own car, because somebody could crash into that." And as I was walking away, he ran out of his, his apartment and, very violently, picked up the note and ripped it up and threw it around and sprayed around the street. So, I thought, he was probably not the kind of person that I want to face, I'm just short. So, anyway, that, that's the situation, and I, I just wanted to encourage you to look at case-by-case, like Jeff had said, and maybe give this some priority, because it really has been problematic for the neighborhood.
Thank you. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
I'll bring it back to council for final comments. Anybody? I have a couple for...
I just, the comment I was going to make was exactly what we just heard, that this not only would help pedestrians, I think it could also help drivers. And there are several intersections in Albany, a bunch in Berkeley, I know for sure, where it's, it's often difficult seeing, you have to almost creep out into the middle of the street before you can see who's coming up and down the street. And on a busy thoroughfare like Marin, that's, that's problematic.
Go ahead.
Just briefly, I support this. I think that I sympathize with the loss of any parking spaces, but I think the, the increased safety far outweighs the disadvantages of doing this.
Completely agree with the many narrow streets in town. I've often had to make wide turns into narrow streets without much visibility, and it's, it's a scary situation. I think this is great. Thank you.
Yeah, I totally agree with all of that. I think the one thing I would encourage is if there's a place where there's maybe a space and a half that we do mark the parking place, because what I, what I foresee happening, and what happens at my house a little bit, is there's a space between the two driveways that you can fit a car, but if you don't park correctly, then you block my driveway or you block the neighbor's driveway. So, I think in, in cases where there's, it needs a little bit of thought, I think marking them would be helpful. So, I think that's important. You know, and I think I've emailed back and forth with you about the Pomona area, and when you commented earlier, I think Jeff, about large vehicles, there's, there's the rule, the vehicles she's referring to, although were large, did not meet our threshold and caused a problem anyway, so we, we need to be a little bit sensitive that that doesn't solve all the problems. But having, having said that, I'd like to see us get through this as quickly as we can, and to do it in as big a block as we can, just let's get this done. I think it's a really good safety move, and I think we need to get it done as quickly as possible. Having said that, I'll accept a motion to adopt Resolution 2017-73.
So, moved.
Second.
Hold the council, please.
Councilmember Barnes?
Yes.
Councilmember Moss?
Yes.
Councilmember Nation?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Peuch?
Yes.
Mayor McQuaid?
Yes, and the motion carries. Okay, our last item, other business, announcement of events, future agenda items. I will be bringing a resolution to council on September 18th, supporting DACA. And that will be our next council meeting, Monday, September 18th. If there's nothing else, I will say that we lost a valuable community member last week, but before we remember him, I'd like to suggest that we also remember those who are suffering from the effects of Hurricane Harvey and the terrible flooding in India, Bangladesh, and Nepal, and also the fires that are even impacting us and our air here in the West. And that we also think a minute about the violence that's rocked our country recently. We, we didn't meet in August, but there was quite a lot of chaos that went on, and think about what each of us can do to bring peace into our world. And now Rochelle is going to remember Jim Walker from Albany High School.
Jim Walker was a very much loved and respected figure in Albany. He, he served the Albany Unified School District for 37 years as a counselor, and ultimately a teacher, and then a counselor, and ultimately a principal, and he was in fact the principal when I was a student at Albany High. And through a very turbulent time in society, this was the, the 70s, when there were riots and so forth, the Vietnam War was going on, he was a remarkably calm and kind presence who really brought people together in a wonderful way. I have heard from fellow students that at a time when the abuse of children, the sexual abuse of children was not, especially of boys, was not as widely recognized as a problem, he was very much aware and took action to protect kids. He, he was a family man. He had four children, grew up in Kensington, very involved in his church, and he will
And with that, we are adjourned. Good job.